Our meeting to order. This is a work session of the Mayor of Borough Council of Seaside Park County, Ocean State, New Jersey Hill on Thursday, May fifth, two thousand twenty-five, advertiser seven P. M. Pursued to the provisions of New Jersey's Open Public Meeting Bank, adequate notice of this meeting was properly provided by transmitting the notice of the meeting publication in the Asbury Park Press and the Ocean Star on January third, two thousand twenty-five. Notice of the meeting in the governing body also should posted in the corridor of the municipal building and in the office of the municipal clerk. Roll call.
Councilmember Immfield?
Present.
Councilmember Condon?
Here.
Councilmember Connor?
Here.
Councilmember Kraft?
Here.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Here.
Council President Will?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here.
Thank you.
The first thing on the agenda entails what is on the regular meeting agenda this evening. It's a resolution whereby the Borough of Seaside Park would participate as a non-paying co-plaintiff in litigation imminently to be filed to challenge the approvals of the Empire Wind Project off the New Jersey-New York light area off the coastline, and that's listed for consideration twenty twenty-five, twenty-two twenty on the regular meeting agenda. And a lot of us individually have raised issues, testified, participated, and taken a stand and raised many unanswered questions as to this issue, which had been placed somewhat on hold, albeit there was litigation still proceeding, and there is as we speak. But what is asked here is an effort at solidarity representing the entire New Jersey coast, the New York area, the fishing interests, the tourism interests, the quality of life and the environment, and that the town would participate as a non-paying co-plaintiff. And in that regard, we welcome one of the experts as to the wind turbine issue who is here with us this evening, and that is Dr. Robert Stern. I'll call him up. He's going to be seated or at the mic either as Dr. Stern as everyone is...
Seated is better.
Okay. Everyone is well aware, heads up the Long Beach Island organization that has spearheaded several, there are suits from other organizations as well, but that particular one has a contrave of experts and some expert attorneys that have been raising issues and meeting success so far. So I'll turn the floor over to him.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for opportunity to come up, and we always like to talk to people off LBI, hooking up to people on LBI. But just for a little background, we had an event at the Seashell actually two days ago to just thank our supporters for helping us. And so I went back, did a little homework, and I realized that we actually started working on this four years ago, and so it's been quite an effort. And as the mayor mentioned, you know, we tried to do a homework. I think we try to do professional level work and really do research so we can support our arguments. We have, and we do have litigation in the hopper now for the Atlantic Shores Project, which is the project led off LBI and Brigantine, and we are waiting for the judge to act on that. We were also able for the Atlantic Shores Project to have one of the permits remanded. It was a Clean Air Act permit. We appealed that permit to the new administrator of EPA because it had a lot of flaws in the way it was done, and he agreed, and that permit was remanded back to EPA. So that put us in a better position because now the Atlantic Shores Project does not have all the permits it needs to proceed with offshore construction. But the situation is different with the Empire Wind Project, which is closer to Seaside Park. They unfortunately do have all the permits. They need to proceed to construction, and it still appears that they want to pursue the project. And, you know, we felt that it is also in our interest, Save LBI organization interest, to oppose this project as well. As the mayor indicated, you know, the impacts here, you know, to marine mammals, for example, to fish, they don't stop at Seaside Park. They don't stop at LBI. If the marine mammal population is harmed here, then we lose also. So it's all intertwined, and some of the legal arguments that we're making on Atlantic Shores are also relevant to Empire Wind. And in fact, I believe a few of them, the arguments are even stronger on the Empire Wind Project. So we also see an opportunity to pursue litigation here, get a favorable ruling from the court, which then frankly would help us in our lawsuit. So it all gets connected, and we have supporters up here as well. You know, we have about ten thousand member supporters now on the mainland, up and down the coast. It's not just LBI, and a number of those folks, they came to me when they heard about the construction, the pending construction, and, you know, they're very upset, and they asked, can we help? So I spoke to my board, and, you know, we felt this is something we should get involved in, and we would very much like to get Seaside Park involved as a non-paying co-plaintiff. Frankly, this is not going to cost us that much because we've already done a lot of the research for the other project, and the issues are somewhat similar. We can take our research and apply it here. We don't have to go back to square one. So it's not going to cost that much, and we're perfectly willing to bear the cost. It's not an issue. But having the town support this as a co-plaintiff, it does help the cause because you're closer to the project, you're harmed more by the project. So when you go to court, you know, one of the first things the judges look for is this thing called standing, and the judge wants to know, are the plaintiffs actually harmed by this? They don't want to entertain frivolous lawsuits. So having your participation really helps the cause, and we would love it if you adopt the resolution to do that. The other thing that occurred, as you may know, well, let me back up a little bit. In one of the submittals we made to the Interior Secretary Douglas Burgum, one of the things we've been asking for is to establish a corridor for the North Atlantic right whale to migrate. You've probably heard about the critically endangered whale that migrates off our shore. In that request to Secretary Burgum, we asked that while you're considering this request, please stop all construction in that corridor while you're considering it, which is, you know, makes sense. And we specifically named the Empire Wind Project, just to halt construction while you consider our petition for this turbine-free zone. And then a week later, he did. Now, I don't know if it was because of our letter or someone else's letter, you know, who knows what, I don't know what goes on in Washington half the time, but he did. So we were very happy about that. And then for some reason, the president stepped in a week, maybe a week or two later, and he, for whatever reason, decided that he would let the project proceed. So, you know, to be frank, we thought that whole episode was a little strange, but, you know, but on reflection, we just feel that despite what the secretary does, despite what the president does, we have to pursue what we think is in our interest. And so I believe we can do that. I believe we can do it without alienating the president. We will send a letter to the president trying to get him focused more on the damage done here so that maybe he will not make such decisions in the future. And in that letter, we can put something in to explain that, you know, we started this litigation before he got involved. We feel it's in our interest along the Jersey coast here. We must continue to pursue it, and in doing so, you know, we mean no disrespect to him. So I think we can structure this so the president will not really be a factor, and we just move on with our litigation. So, you know, that's kind of where we are. I would just say the two main issues in the litigation package for Empire Wind, one involves the Marine Mammal Protection Act and the Northern Coastal Migratory Dolphin, which for some reason is harmed quite a bit by this project. And we believe the harm to that particular species, there's too many incidences of harm to that species, and we believe that violates that act. So that is one major source of contention. The other major source of contention is the impact of the turbines on air defense radars that we have in Riverhead, New York. In Riverhead, New York, we have a set of, they call them A S, ARSR four radars. They're part of the NORAD Early Warning System. They look out over the ocean for unwanted objects. The turbines from Empire Wind will impair those radars, and this was not addressed well in the environmental impact statement. And more importantly, we do not see any mitigation being done by the Defense Department to reverse this. And so the project appears to be moving forward and will damage our radar capability. And to me, this makes absolutely no sense, absolutely no sense. So, you know, Russia and whoever are building drones now by the tens of thousands, and we're creating a situation where these drones could come in over these turbines and not be detected. So we will see how the court views this, but to me, this is something that should require a halt.
Yeah.
Require a halt. Let's see what's going on here. Let's see what the Defense Department has to say. So I hope that will also be a major cause of reflection. And the other thing that we're going to try to bring to the court's attention is the permanence of these installations. We have not seen, and we have asked, the Interior Department, how will you remove these turbines at the end of their useful life? And they refuse to answer the question. They refuse to even provide a feasibility study, just forget cost benefit. We asked, how would you technically remove these turbines? One, we just said, tell us how you would remove one turbine and section of the foundation twenty years from now or fifteen years from now, one. They refused to answer the question. The current regulations do not require removal. They allow the Interior Department to leave them in place, topple them in place, et cetera, et cetera. So the more you read, the more it looks to us like once these things are put in, they're not taking them out. And so twenty years from now, this will fall to the state, to the federal government, to the towns, and we think that a court should reflect on this because if you don't hold these up and get that issue resolved, we're facing, we believe, some really serious problems twenty years from now. You know, and I know twenty years is twenty years, but still, it's something I think that should be resolved now. So I think those are the three main things in the complaint, but there are other deficiencies we're citing also in the environmental impact statement.
I have a question. First of all, I support it, but are there other towns that you're asking to also be co-plaintiffs or just Seaside Park because of our proximity to LBI or?
Seaside Park just came up. The mayor contacted us, and we actually hadn't been thinking about contacting the towns. We were kind of rushed. We do have other co-plaintiffs. The Save the East Coast organization, I think, has been working more up here. We have Protect Our Coast, Long Island.
Right, I mean, I know there's a lot of individual groups.
Yeah.
I know, Mayor, and I've spoken about it. The more united you could get these groups, and I know you've been very active, but hurt your speed.
Yeah, Seaside right now is the only one.
Okay.
You know, if we had more time, we are trying to get this in quickly because they're planning to construct. Yeah, if we had more time, I think we would have reached out more yet.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
The link Mayor Mancini is very much supportive too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the mayor's.
Who's pushing the other side? Who's on the other side?
Equinor, the Equinor Company, as I understand it, it's seventy-five percent owned by the Norwegian government. You know, a lot of these corporations are Europeans. Many of them are partly owned or substantially owned by the government itself. So, you know, they're pushing the other side, and, you know, and we don't try to make this political at all, and we, you know, our organization is nonpartisan. We don't take sides in any of the political issues. But the Democratic Party appears to believe that these offshore wind turbines are substantially beneficial to something, and they are pursuing it. There were eighteen or nineteen states filed a lawsuit against the president's wind directive that came out on January twentieth, where that directive just asked for a halt in current projects and a review of prior projects. Eighteen states sued to void that directive because of their interest in offshore wind turbines. So, I mean, to be frank about it, I cannot understand why this is such a high priority. I find virtually no benefit in these projects, and I find substantial harm. I would hope that the other party could pursue, get focused on something else. But until they do, the Democratic Party and a lot of their representatives appear to continue to push this.
Is there a happy meeting?
In what sense?
Can they, I don't know, is it happy, either they're there or they gotta go between? There's no in-between?
I don't, I don't see much in-between.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, I...
Can we, I'll say, can we interrupt momentarily? Yeah, I'll keep you at the table, and I want to switch for number two, then we'll come right back to any other questions from the council. And what number two, why I'm doing this, and I apologize to you and everyone, we have a hard stop for an attorney who's covering another meeting, and she's our special counsel, and this is number two. It's endorsement of the Affordable Housing Fair Share Plan element.
Hello. Hi, Robin, you're in the public meeting.
Hi, Robin.
Hello.
We appreciate you taking the time. I know you've got a hard stop with the meeting about to start. What we have on the work session agenda, naturally, on the regular meeting agenda to follow immediately is a resolution, and it's what we needed, if you could just highlight as you've done for the council all along when we covered this issue, it's discussion of our endorsement of the Affordable Housing and Fair Share Plan element approved by the Planning Board on May nineteenth, and that's Resolution twenty twenty-five, two twenty-four on the regular meeting tonight. And if you could just give us the summary, I know the council's been well aware, having worked on this for the last year with yourself, our planner, Kendra Keely, and the Planning Board in particular, a lot of work has been done. So maybe if we could turn that over to you, and also you could underscore why the timing is very critical as this needs to be moved tonight. So I'll turn the floor over to you.
So the legislation adopted last year required the DCA to promulgate numbers for all the municipalities in New Jersey for their affordable housing obligations for the next ten-year period starting July first, twenty twenty-five, and going to June thirtieth of twenty thirty-five. Seaside Park has not previously participated in the affordable housing, but did participate this round. The numbers that the DCA adopted was zero for the rehabilitation obligation, which is the number of existing substandard units in town that need to be upgraded. So that number of zero is not something that we have to worry about. And the fourth round obligation was eighteen. So we adopted those numbers, and then we're tasked with coming up with a housing element and fair share plan to plan for these eighteen units. Now, because Seaside Park has not previously participated, there's also a need that existed from prior rounds that we had to account for in the housing element. And what Kendra did was what's called a vacant land analysis, which was looking at all of the vacant land that's buildable in the borough that could be used for multifamily housing, and came up with a number of zero. So we have an R E P of zero. We have a prior round unmet need, which is the prior round number that we didn't plan for. And what we're doing in the housing element, and that's a chance for the prior round is an overlay ordinance. So that any properties that are developed in the borough over the next ten years that are more than five units, multi-family residential projects with more than five units, anyone within one of those would have to provide one floor a week, so the twenty percent set aside throughout the borough. The legislation also required for the fourth round that if you are going to be adjusting your obligation, that you have to plan for the redevelopment of twenty-five percent of your adjusted number. So our number was eighteen, and we had to come up with a plan for twenty-five percent of that, which is five units. So what the housing element does is adopt, recommend an overlay district, which is, we call it the North Ocean Avenue Overlay District, which is a one-point-three-acre site and are going to designate that as the area for the redevelopment for the unmet need. So it's on block twenty, it's block ninety-one, along North Ocean Avenue between Faria Avenue and Porter Avenue, and it's overlaying on for multifamily housing with a density of twenty units per acre. So that, where it can be developed for multifamily housing, review of the five units that were needed. It doesn't require that to be developed on the property, but it could, the overlay. So the underlying going is still there, but the overlay creates the potential for redevelopment of the multifamily housing. And the affordable housing legislation, so the deadline, you know, we have since filed, we're the means of building, you know, these as long as we need certain deadlines. You have to adopt the resolution by the end of January. And now we have to adopt the housing element with recommended ordinances by June thirtieth, and the ordinance has to be adopted by March fifteenth. The next step in this process is we, the planning board has adopted a plan, you're considering a resolution endorsing a plan, and we'll submit it by June thirtieth, and then anyone has up until August thirty-first that will challenge it. If they don't challenge it, and the program finds our plan insufficient, then we're good. If they do challenge it, then we have until December thirty-first to work that out with the challenge. I don't foresee Seaside Park getting challenged with a going possibility. And then the ordinance is implemented after plan for the overlay ordinance, and the overlay district will have to be adopted by March fifteenth of next year.
Thank you, Robin. Thanks for your work all along on this particular issue. Anyone on the council? I know Marty's here, Representative of Planning Board, the Planning Board has conducted hours of work on this issue as well. Any comments or questions from council?
No, I think that was well covered.
No, I appreciate the summary, Robin. We want to make sure that was spread on the record accurately, and everyone's aware of it.
Great.
Anything from council? If not, we thank you very much for weighing in, and I know you have another meeting that you're prepping for.
Yes, it's a living life. But no, it's my pleasure, and if anyone has any questions, I'm available.
Thank you, Robin.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
So, and we have Dr. Stern here. I didn't know, I'm sure the question from council, I know, having talked to Mayor Mancini, I know he would be, and all the towns in the vicinity are very supportive as well. So, I know time is of the essence, that's why this has come on. Everyone was to get something filed quickly is the real issue here.
Doctor, the Empire, when do their permits expire?
When do the permits expire?
For their operation. In other words, if the permits expire, they're unable to proceed with their reconstruction. So if you tie it up long enough.
I think that they might be like five, seven years.
Oh, okay.
I'm not certain when exactly, but I believe that when they grant these, they last for five, seven years.
Yeah, but I didn't know when it was initiated at the beginning.
Yeah. Most, I'm not sure, I'm not sure when they were issued. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we can count on the permits running out, you know. I mean, they're moving quickly, as I understand.
Well, they've got ships there.
Yeah, they got ships moving, you know.
They're not moving, they're there.
They're there, right?
Yes. It showed the picture of them, maybe, it's like...
Well, we're, our attorney has drafted a complaint. He's working now on the injunction part of the complaint because originally, when we started this, Secretary Burgum had halted the project, so we didn't think we needed to apply for injunction. But now we need to ask for injunction on the construction. So attorney's working hard on that. We'll be prepared to file this within days.
Doctor, what court, what court are you in? Federal court?
Federal court in New Jersey, District Federal Court of New Jersey is where we've been filing these cases.
So the decision's got to come out of Washington. Decision's going to come out of Washington, and then we're going to go forward or we're not going to go forward.
The decisions come out of Washington, and I've had discussions with our attorney about the best venue to file in. He feels pretty strongly that we're better off in New Jersey than Washington. But, you know, there's, you know, when you file these cases, a judge is assigned. We have no control over, you know, who the judge is. And frankly, in these kinds of cases, a lot depends on the judge because they're pretty complicated. You know, you get into noise, the marine mammals, you have to do a little homework to understand it. I hope we get a judge willing to invest the time to understand these issues. If we do, I think we have a much better shot at prevailing it. So we're hopeful that that will happen.
Are they in a holding pattern now?
No.
The company?
Yeah, they can build their...
They don't look like they're holding, no, they're moving forward to start putting the first foundation in, yeah. Yeah, that's, they'll, you piled...
You know you're in court? You know they're in court?
Well, we got to get the judge to issue the injunction first, yeah. I mean, just going to court does not stop.
No, they don't do anything wrong right now. Until, they got to...
But my hope is, we file quickly. My hope is the judge will act soon and grant the injunction, that then they will have to stop.
Doctor Stern, if that doesn't happen, what would your plans be after that?
Well, you know, that's a good question. If they're allowed to construct, you know, we could still pursue the lawsuit, but we might not get a decision until they've already constructed.
Yeah.
And that makes it harder and harder for a judge to seize things. So that's something I have to go back to our attorney and to our board and talk about, and to you, if you decide to be... and, and to you, if you decide to be co-plaintiffs. And that's something we, we would discuss. Would it still be worthwhile to pursue the lawsuit? Which might take, you know, aside from the injunction, getting a response from the judge on the merits of the lawsuit might take four or five months. They might have a lot constructed by then. So really, a lot rides on this injunction. The injunction is really, at this point, it's really the critical thing we need to get in quickly and, and argue before the court.
Well, thank you for taking the leadership on it. I know you've worked a lot, really, really hard. I've seen you speak at other events and rallies, so I appreciate it and give it a best shot.
To put some of what Dr. Stern said in perspective as to the permanency of the structures, this Empire Wind Project will include placing 3 billion pounds of rock on the seafloor, right in areas that are prime grounds for scalps, squid, fluke, and other marine species, plus directly in the migratory patterns of the critically endangered north Atlantic right whale.
But we can't put oyster shells in the network. A little ironic.
I think, I think this one is 12 miles off. Ours is nine miles off.
This is closer to Seaside Park. And one of the comments made included that the actual owner of the project is a foreign government, as are almost each and every wind project, is owned by a foreign government and oil companies. Their real applicants are oil companies. We ironically have on this agenda this evening, Seaside Park is taking the lead as their door has potentially been open for oil drilling off the coast. So that's another issue that, there's a long history here, and Seaside Park has that issue as well. And if anyone needs any other proof what happened this last summer from the manufacturers of the wind turbines themselves are also foreign governments, they're non-biodegradable. And at one of the events that I heard you speak at, as I noted, Councilmember Condos, and someone actually had some of the materials of the shards of the, this happened off of Nantucket, and they came all the way down here in the ocean, those shards, and no one knows how to dispose of them. They're non-biodegradable, so. And thank you very much for taking the trip up here.
Do you think you could do the resolution tonight?
Yes, it's on the agenda this evening.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Our website, you can go on our website, and there's, there's an email address. If you have questions, send, send an email, I'll see it, I'll respond to you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming up.
And we've already talked with our attorney on the affordable housing, the fair share plan, so that Seaside Park will, will be in compliance. The next item for discussion is the Ocean County's multi-jurisdictional all-hazard mitigation plan, and that too is listed for consideration, Resolution 2025-213 at the regular meeting. And Jenna has that available, so we're under.
It's very long. It's a hundred and four pages.
Yeah, so everyone obviously can, has had their chance and can do so in the future. So we certainly thank, in particular, A.J. Mans has taken the lead on this all along, as he had, and so that we're in compliance. And you see the letters that have come as to the plan, and that too is on the agenda this evening. The resolutions to be provided by June 16th to stay eligible for any few months funding as well. Does anybody else have any questions on that?
No.
The next item on the agenda is a proposal from RBE Engineering to update the stormwater management plan for NJDEP, MS4 compliance. That too is listed for consideration, Resolution 2025-214 at the regular meeting this evening. I don't know, can't believe on that.
We, we need our engineers' help because we just don't have the expertise to, DEP has a lot of new regulations, and our plan hasn't been updated in 20 years. So we just need their assistance with some of the GIS mapping and some of the expertise we just simply don't have, and it's a requirement by the DEP.
Yeah, the cost is not to exceed $4,200.
And we may be able to shave some of that off, because some of the tasks in their proposals, we could probably do in-house. So probably like the last two tasks on their proposal, we can do in-house, so. Just for the task A, that, the heavy lift, that's where we really need their help.
And those two, once you're in compliance, that makes the town eligible for any and all grant opportunities at the federal level, state level. So that's, that's another important, just like the last one on the agenda. The next item is a discussion of proposal from T and M Associates to provide grant application services fiscal year 2026 NJDOT municipal aid program. That's listed for consideration as Resolution 2025-216 at the regular meeting this evening. And I mean, that's obviously, we've been very successful over the years with that particular program for grants in the various roads. We have a hierarchy of those and the most urgent need for repair, rehab work, and hopefully we'll get more rather than less, and I can move forward on that.
Yeah, we've gotten over $300,000 each of the last three years from these grants, and, and T and M's price to prepare the application has been flat for those three years, so they're not increasing their price.
And the cost for this one is not to exceed $2,000.
Anything else from council on that one? F is 1033 LSO program for Seaside Park Police Department to request and acquire excess Department of Defense equipment, listed for consideration, Resolution 2025-217 in the regular meeting. And this follows the same rationale as some of these prior resolutions. If you don't have such an enabling resolution in place, you're not eligible. If there are some equipment that becomes available, I know over the years, some of it has been very useful, some of it not so useful, but the town's.
There's no cost to the town.
Yeah, and it's all, excess government property. Any council questions on that one?
No, there's no question.
And the next is a resolution opposing the inclusion of new offshore oil and gas leasing off the coast of New Jersey, and that too is listed on the agenda for the regular meeting. And this has come about through involvement of various organizations, and in particular, the Oceana organization has been taking the lead on making towns, counties, and the state aware that the, some recent proposals have again made the coastline or waters off New Jersey potentially open for drilling. And you see as well, there was a joint resolution from the Barrier Island mayor groups, and every mayor signed in. Seaside Park in fact hosted that last meeting of that group of the mayor. So everyone was very concerned, each town involved. So this is a follow-up resolution from our town to send to the congressional representatives in New Jersey and other federal authorities as to the value of the coast, as to the vulnerability, if indeed there is a spill, how that would have such a disastrous impact on the tourism industry. And for those who want to put that in perspective, I have, from Ocean County itself, we have 44 miles of Atlantic Coast beaches, 42 miles along the Varnigat Bay, and tourism in Ocean County alone is a $7 billion industry. That's how, so.
That's just Ocean County.
That's just Ocean County, yeah. So you can see what could happen for an environmental disaster, such as that has occurred in other areas, so.
Mayor, each of the other mayors that have signed this, also putting out resolutions? Is that the intent?
I believe so. That was the hope, that, and you see, there's a sample resolution, and Jenna was kind enough to adapt Seaside Park that's going around. And this too has come up very quickly in the last few weeks. So I believe all of the towns, and there's another coastal mayor group meeting in July, so if anybody hasn't, I know they'll be reminded. But I think, and to answer your question, everybody was going to jump on board. Does Jenna have, there's a letter from all the mayors? Everybody has that.
This was a big topic at the marathon, but we had, that we sponsored for all the mayors based in the Bay Area, except Tom River wasn't there.
Yeah, no, Tom River did not appear.
Not, was not there, but, but everybody else was. Everybody was there. And a number of topics were discussed during that, and this was a major topic of each town, each mayor. It really, really was, it's a big time concern, so, yes.
So this, our resolution will go to Speaker of the House, Johnson, and also Congressman Westerman, who's the Chair of the Natural Resources Committee, in particular, that has jurisdiction over this area. The next item is a proposal from RBE dated June 3rd, 2025, for change in scope of the engineering services for HMGP Bayfront Wave Dissipation Project. That's listed for consideration on the regular meeting, 225-223. And this entails what we've discussed many, many times in past hearings and past passing of resolutions and authorizations. And what this is involved with is a requirement that's been from the Army Corps of Engineers to modify what, for want of a better term, was the initial bayfront project that has gone back many years, that's been stalled because we don't have an Army Corps of Engineers permit. We have a DEP permit, we have all the county permits and a lot of others, but we do not have Army Corps. And they had posed an obstacle that we should have an SAV component for mitigation, which was contrary to what the stance taken by the Army Corps on at least two other area projects that entailed SAV disturbance. But that being said, this would allow RBE in an amount not to exceed $7,500 to adapt the plans to what their requirements would be. The other added issue is right after this, that that would entail a survey. We have surveys that Dr. Lacy had proposed from the Stockton Coastal Institute previously, and we also have a number of drone footage, photographs, and a lot of supplemental materials that show the area where this project is proposed to go into the bay. And as Dr. Farrell had demonstrated some years back, none of the coastline, the Sandy Bottom Beach, has any SAV on it. And we feel there are minimal areas of SAV out in the water area where the oyster reefs are proposed. And Dr. Belunga is our expert in SAV, and he had not performed service. You see, the services provided were minimal, like $1,000. And this would allow him to provide this, I think there's some grad students and some workers from the American Literary Society are going to reassign some people to do it at very minimal cost. So this is authorization, it's $2,056 to complete that survey. Any other questions on that one?
I guess they're contemplating a three days to do that between the 17th and 19th of June.
Apparently it's a very thin window to get the ideal growing season for SAV. So it's about to run out. So that's here. And then otherwise, we'd be happy to.
Three days to arrive.
Hold until another calendar year, so this allows them.
Is this in theory, because I know I've said this before, I am, you know, I support all the effort and energy that's going into everything. We keep like doing more surveys after surveys, and research after research, and trying to fight it, but do we have, like, do you feel, I guess, last morning, I think you were like kind of leaving, like, will this be kind of like the last shot at this particular piece with them, then?
At this project?
Yeah, I mean, for trying to get this permit, I mean, because otherwise, it's like a never-ending, just pit. It's like we just, you know, we're spitting up wind.
I can quote some cynics that have looked at this issue, and they kind of feel that that's the very goal of some of the hierarchies involved. They want the town to go away on that, this issue, but I don't know that. I've been polite, courteous, as has everyone here, when we've dealt with them in our meetings, virtual meetings, in and on one. I'm hoping with this, that would box them in, if that's the right word, would comply with anything they've asked of us, even if it doesn't appear reasonable on its surface, which this, you could argue, is not. But on that project, you're correct as well, that there's a lot of expertise, a lot of people in the Bayfront Committee have looked at it, a lot of Pam Hill. It's going into the water, it obviously has an element of risk, and you can't quite, we asked Dr. Farrell originally, what are your percentages of success? And he doesn't give it, didn't give it 100%, but, and you can ask him the next question, which we all know is looming, how many years are we buying a town if it is successful? That's the big issue, obviously, but I don't.
I mean, this isn't a ton of money, but it's the cumulative effect of all the small items that, you know, stopped in, and this one, and that one. I appreciate the efforts, but I think we have to, at some point, you draw, like, are we, I don't know, there has to be an end goal. And when you say, okay, that's it, we've exhausted our efforts on this, and maybe you have to approach it with, you know, some of the other plans are being discussed.
Well, there's nothing, that's another good point you're making, but there's nothing about this project that hinders or delays at least two other major projects. They're, they're ongoing also. That entails the mini pump station project, that's up and running, they're working on putting that in place, the first pilot in 14th Ave area and going north. And then the other project is the sheathing project, which is in the, more the concept stage, and I know there's some big issues with respect to the Fifth Avenue Dock Playground area, but even bigger ones as to access ingress, egress with the aqua. So that, that's the, how to design that is, is the challenge right now, to put that project to the next phase. But that, they can both proceed in our proceeding separate from this one.
Right.
They're not obstructing it, they're different.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from council, or any other issues for the work session from council?
No, it's pretty clear.
Hearing none, we'll go into the audience if there's any public comments or questions as to any issues on the work session, and if you could give your name and address, Mr. Joseph.
It's Dr. Joseph, since we've been blessed with Dr. Stern here, I might as well mention that.
A surgeon?
PhD in electrical engineering, thank you. The oil and gas drilling offshore, I agree with you, because I don't think there's a need for it. We've already pumped more gas and oil out of the ground as a country than any other country in the world. So why should we run any risk at all? So. So with that said, I got to say something about this wind farm nonsense. And I could focus on a lot of different issues, but I'm going to stick to something that's well within my expertise. If this red herring about a wind farm placed there is going to affect our ability to see incoming air defense issues because it'll interfere with air defense radars? Well, that was true when my father did work on radars during World War II, when the term radar was classified. Technology has advanced a lot since then. When I started my career, my first job was at Hughes Aircraft Company, working in a group that made radar systems for battlefield environments. And let's face it, that was a long time ago. And being able to see past this wind farm with those systems then was trivial. Doing it now with all the sophisticated solid-state equipment we have, it's saying there's a problem and that this thing's going to interfere. Those DOD people are not responding because they're laughing. That is just a joke. I'm sorry. The technology was able to solve that problem in the 60s and 70s and certainly by now, it's trivial. As long as there's an air defense radar looking in the right direction, in other words, out to see past where this thing is, eliminating the ground clutter caused by these wind farms is trivial. So frankly, there are a lot of arguments you can make that may make some sense that relate to the animals that live in that environment or possible pollution issues, but let's stick to things that are rational. And that one isn't. I don't know what else to say.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments on work session? Yes.
Mike Spatafino, 59th Avenue. And always, if you are going to put yourselves in a position to be backing a lawsuit, you should make sure that you're fully aware of all sides. Now, I did a lot of studying on the issue because I believe very strongly in the environment, the presentations that were done all around the state by the BOM. And I went and asked many of the questions that he is citing. And they were able to answer those questions with studies and facts that satisfied my, withholding my support of this issue. I think it's very incumbent on you, if you're going to sign on to a lawsuit, that you should have taken the time to look at his argument and the BOM's presentations so you make an educated decision and not an emotional decision. I love marine life just as much as anybody. I also believe that the less gas, oil pollutions that we can have, because there is a value in having electric from wind farms as opposed to gas and oil. As far as being able to like see them from the shore, you know, the mist and the pollution make it so you're not going to see it except on the best day. And you know what I would look forward to is the day that I could see it out there because we reduced pollution enough by having that replacement energy so that I could see clearly through the ocean at its pre, at its very, very best. Thank you.
Thank you, 21st High Street. The question of the last two, H and I, that's the grass. Seems to me I remember last blowout tide that it was determined there was no grass. What happened to that information? And that's not sufficient?
The Army Corps of Engineers has it all. And we think the Ocean County Sheriff's Department actually sent their drones and photographed the entire bayfront. And it's very unfortunate, but I don't, we probably could capture it somehow, someone might have it, but after the, I think it was 86 days that it didn't rain last year, that was some of the most remarkable views down into the bay that I think Bill and all of us, look at the bay region and it was unbelievable. You could see 10, 12 feet down, everything was clear.
So and there's clear?
They've, they've got it.
There's no grass.
So that's your Army Corps of Engineers. I will refrain from saying anything further.
So they're making us pay another $7,000 to confirm what they already know?
$7,500, up not to exceed, unfortunately.
To confirm what they already know.
Confirm what we know and we know what's been handed to them. And there are beautiful videos and not just photographs.
And we turned them off. We turned them all over, we didn't keep any.
Oh, they exist.
We have sheriff has. We have, yeah.
Don't try to make it make sense.
Yes, Edie? Do not apply logic.
Eddie, 4811, down there. Couple of questions. The 1033 LESO program for the police to get the book from the Defense Department, is that used, new, combination?
Combination. The past, I know we had night goggles. That were actually useful. And we had some equipment and trucks that were not used.
We don't buy it.
No, we don't buy it. And there's three categories of equipment.
Oh, okay. As long as we comply with whatever program that we have.
Right, there's three categories.
And I guess my beef would be with them, is why are they giving away new stuff? Why are they buying?
Department of Defense.
That's another discussion.
Surplus, yeah.
Well, there you go. When you talk about the all hazard mitigation plan, and I know you said it's like the zoning campaign, could you just give like one or two examples of like what that might be or what that might be like? What kind of mitigation can we talk about?
We met with the consulting group that did the plan and probably a year or so ago, met them several times. And it's just about building resiliency within the town and what our, what our hazard plans are incorporated into the plan.
Like, how do we build resiliency?
Well, it's like for our main buildings, do you have generators, you know, things like that.
Just curious. I think maybe that's a lot. Oh, the affordable housing, the property between Farragut and Porter, is that, because I'm having trouble visualizing, is that, that's empty land right there?
Parking lot.
Parking lot that the town owns.
No, no.
No, we don't own it.
Nobody does.
Oh, okay. Well, all right. I didn't think we did, but I thought it would end.
Correct.
So if our plan, if our plan to put five things there, we would have to take that property possibly by eminent domain?
No, no, no. If the property owner wants to develop it pursuant to the overlay that the town has now done, they now have the ability to develop it for affordable housing based upon the overlay ordinance that's going to allow that development, which is up to 20 units per acre.
Okay, so, and that would satisfy our?
According to our co-op council, that would satisfy our thing. So we don't have to do it, they don't have to do it. But it's there to be, to satisfy our obligation that we have that land vacant that could be developed in that fashion.
Well, that works out well, huh?
Yeah, for example, in Point Pleasant, we're on the zoning board attorney now, we've had several applications of some vacant lands for affordable housing. If you're familiar with the OB diner, the vacant land just west of that is being developed for affordable housing and someone just came for us for another development on Ocean Road for affordable housing.
So the owner of this property that we're talking about could put as many as 20 units there?
20 units, five affordable.
Five affordable. Do you think that's the plan that he's going with or we don't know that yet?
It's a number of owners involved in a partnership.
Say more.
You can imagine some of the owners that are not far away from, that's where they have businesses. Right now, they want to operate it as a parking lot. Very happy to have a parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Mitch?
Mitch, couple of 204 to 10 M, you're, I'll follow up a little bit on Faze, comments on H and I. Let's start with Dr. Longa's work. The scope of his work is only in the area of the original project or he's going to do SAV analysis across the whole bay?
Just in the area of seven blocks of the original project.
My suggestion is why are we missing the opportunity when he mobilizes his crew to do it? We're going to need that work for all the other projects along the bay anyway. Let's get all the data at once in one mobilization.
Well, that's the balancing you get up here. You can't please everyone. We just heard a comment that we shouldn't spend $7,500, so we're spending what's reasonable.
She was asking a question, why, and you gave her the right answer.
We're getting a grad, two graduate students, I think, are coming and one's coming from Delaware Bay from an ALR volunteer. So we grabbed them and they've volunteered, they are going to help out.
I mean, I brought this up two years ago at the hearing that we had, that I suggested that we call somebody to do another SAV analysis because obviously the Corps wasn't satisfied with what information was provided in the original one from Stockton. I really believe we had no SAV. I said, let's spend, I thought it'd be $5,000 to $10,000 to do the whole bay. Let's get that all done and put it in, that's on the record. So I repeat myself, we're going to have to do it again for the rest of the bay. I would ask him.
Why do you feel that we'll have to do it for the whole bay? What is that based on?
Based on all the proposals from RVE which extend out, we're going to have to prove as we build the living shoreline in front of any bulkhead that we are not going to cover up SAV. We are going to have to.
That's a living shoreline project. You are correct.
That's what I'm saying. So we're going to need to take it in anyway.
There's two other projects ending right now, not living shoreline project. The more you go out, the more difficult it is.
These other two projects, no one's heard anything except what Pam Hill presented.
We've heard.
We've got it on many, many addresses.
And I watched everyone online and I didn't hear Pam Hill.
The entire package is available online. They're not yelling out with a living shoreline. That's, the more you go out on the western into the water, the more difficult it's going to be.
Except, I think that, so the question I have is depending on what Dr. Belunga's work uncovers, if it supports the analysis that you got with pictures, which is visual, and it's sent to the Corps, or can be available to the Corps, what is the change in scope that RVE is going to do? Is it going to talk about no, no SAV exists? What's the change in scope? Is it going to reflect?
One of the, now, one of the primary areas that the Corps suggested was to remove one row of the oyster reefs. So that's, that's what it's entailed in the calculations from Stockton Coastal Institute suggests it will still satisfy the wave attenuation element of the project.
So they believe removing one will take the issue of SAV off the table?
One row. One row.
Get the issue of SAV off the table.
Well, it would reduce the amount of. This came from Army Corps, yeah.
Just a general comment, the Bayfront Advisory Committee met last weekend, we're very disappointed how there's been zero communication, any follow-up in Van Hillup, any of the requests we put forward to the mayor and council. And it's disappointing because I get asked by people here, neighbors, about information and I say, as Bayfront Advisory Committee, we don't have any new information. We haven't heard any response to any of the letters we sent to the mayor and council.
Any other comments for work session? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to end the work session, take a minute and go right into our regular meeting.
Make the motion, Maya.
Motion by Councilmember Conda. Second. Second by Councilmember Otunda. Roll call.
Councilmember Conda?
Yes.
Councilmember Otunda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ambeal?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Council President Will?
Yes.
Bo Scharf?
And we'll take a few moments.